Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, May 14th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll start as we always do with our reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I would like to have a student advisory council.
Hi, my name is Lilis and I have quite a few updates tonight. So, the Megan Burnett concert will be taking place on May 22nd at the Galvin, and it is hosted by the Tri-M Music Honor Society. And it is $5 for general admission, and all the proceeds go to the Megan Burnett Foundation. And I know that the softball team is really helping out with this, as well as the diversity leaders. And the Integrated Basketball League has just started, and what that is, is a bunch of students have partnered with some of the special education students. And so far, we've had two games. Unfortunately, we've lost both of those, but they were really good games, and that doesn't really matter because it's been such a great experience. I know I can say that, and I know a lot of my friends on the team have had so much fun too. And then, we don't have a game this week, but we're participating in a jamboree next week in Lexington, so that should be really fun. And the junior prom is on Friday, and it is at Hillview Country Club in North Reading. And all of the juniors, if the weather's nice, we all go down to the common and take pictures before, so that's gonna be really fun. And AP tests have been going on. I know the AP US History test was last week, the AP Literature test was last week, and the AP Calc test was today, and the AP Language test is tomorrow. And I have taken one of them, and I know it's just such a sigh of relief, and like, you feel so good after taking them, so those are going on right now. And the Swiss Exchange Program was just introduced to the incoming seniors, and I know that's, there's been a lot of talk going on about that. The applications are out, and then there is an informational meeting next week for students who wish to do it, so that should be really fun. And then, there's a lot going on for the seniors right now. Their Senior Spirit Week is going on right now. Yesterday was Pyjama Day, today was Decade Day, tomorrow is Disney themed, Thursday is Throwback Thursday where they wear like their elementary school shirts, and Friday is Tropical Day. And then, I know senior finals are next week. And then, I have a couple of sports updates. The girls' track team are Middle Sex League Champions. The girls' softball team won in a huge upset against Burlington yesterday, and I know that puts them in a really good spot going towards the tournament. The boys' tennis team is currently tied in a match against Burlington. They had to call off the rest of it due to the rain, but that should be really exciting. It's scheduled for next Wednesday. And then, the boys' lacrosse team won against Wilmington today, and the boys' baseball team won yesterday against Burlington.
Wow.
Yeah.
Welcome to spring.
Yeah.
And the girls' lacrosse team won.
They won today too, I'm sorry, I have that on here, I must have missed that.
I know because my feet are still thawing out from.
How long does it take for you to hear back about your AP exams?
Um, we find out in July.
Any questions?
Great job with Unified Sports.
Thank you, I'm so happy, I am a part of it, it's so much fun.
Great job.
Hopefully, it gets off to a good start and gets to a more expanded role next year.
Yeah. And the game was in Melrose last week, and there was actually a really, like, their student section was really full, unfortunately ours wasn't, but there was a pretty big crowd from the Melrose side.
Good, well, everything has room to grow.
Yeah.
How many more games left?
We only have the jamboree next week, yeah.
Oh, just the jamboree and it, nice.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You sound like you're very busy. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have a motion on the minutes, please.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April 30th, 2019, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the May 8th, 2019, school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting as presented.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any questions? Okay, all of those in favor? Be unanimous? And budget items?
Thank you. So, in your packet, you have the budget reports ending the month of April, or through the end of April. I usually just go through and hit the highlights for the new members of the committee. The first report is done by category, so it's personnel services, basically salaries. And currently, we are over expended by $336,000. Couple of reasons behind that, there's some charge-offs that I have not done yet to the Wakefield Academy, the Reading Post Academy, Reading-Wakefield Post Academy partnership, that money has not been allocated off yet also. And the third part behind that is the power professionals that we hired earlier this year to keep some districts, some students in district who typically would have gone out of district. So, we were expecting the salary lines to be over, and as you see further down, the tuition lines are severely under, so it balances each other out. On line eight, there's people transportation, that's trending the wrong way. I think there might be a purchase order open that hasn't been closed yet for last month, so I'm gonna look into that before the next month's reports come out, but just wanted to let you know that I was keeping an eye, keeping an eye on that. Other than that, we have $181,000 remaining for the budget for the remainder of the year. There was some purchasing going on this week. We have asked all principals to get their purchase orders in this week so that we can start to close out the year. My, kind of my short story is, if you haven't purchased it yet, you probably don't need it. So, we're trying to close out the year, or get ready to close out the year, and understand what kind of financial position we'll be in before our next finance and facilities subcommittee meeting. But, no concerns right now, everything seems to be in line from the local budget standpoint. Any questions in the local budget?
Just like the purchase order for transportation, what's like an example of could be outstanding?
So, I open up a purchase order every September with, for North Reading Transportation, that's our bus company provider.
Okay.
And they also do a lot of our special education transportation also at a district. So, I'll open up a purchase order with them, and when the invoices come in, if we don't key the invoice off of the purchase order.
Okay.
And we just key it directly against the account, it may.
So, it's like a blanket PO that extends for the year?
Right.
Okay.
But we usually have it dolled out, we know how much it's gonna cost. On regular education, we know what the costs are gonna be. Special education, that can vary depending on when a kid goes out of district or comes back in the district, it can adjust either way. So, somewhere along the lines, I have a PO that's open that shouldn't be open, is my assumption. But I do need to investigate that, and I will have an answer for the finance and facilities subcommittee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If it's not an error, then we are over expended, but you know, it could be because of special education, which it shouldn't be actually, because we kept more kids in district this year, so that shouldn't be out of whack.
Right.
But I'll have, I do have to look at it, I just didn't have time.
Okay.
Before today's meeting.
Thank you.
But not something I'm concerned about, I think that's just a purchasing error.
Okay.
Purchase order.
Do athletic, does athletic transportation come into that line, or are they athletic line?
So, there, in the local budget, there is one line for athletic transportation along with performing and visual arts transportation. When we offset the user fees the last two years in the budget, part of that, part of that money that came in from the town to offset the fees, I allocated it out for supplies, contracted services, buses, different things like that. So, in the budget, there are two small lines, one for athletics and one for performing arts. They're probably less than 20,000 each.
On this report, are they all lumped into that one line?
It's lumped into that people transportation line, correct.
So, that's not just our regular buses, that's the athletic buses and everything?
Special education, athletics, performing arts, regular day transportation, everything, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
After you charge out like Wakefield Academy, et cetera, what, where would you anticipate our personnel line being over by, or what?
So, $48,000 is gonna go, come off of Wakefield Academy, that was established years ago by the committee as a, for lack of a better word, rent.
Yeah.
For the Wakefield Academy, operating after school in six of our buildings. Heat, electricity, custodial services, things of those nature, of that nature. So, we take $48,000 off, so that would reduce it automatically by 48,000. And then, the Reading piece, I'd have to look at our agreement this year, I think that their, their, their portion of payment is 30% this year of the costs, and there's two teacher salaries and three power salaries in there, so 30% of say, 150, so maybe another, you know, 45,000 dollars.
Yeah.
Come off for, for the Reading portion of that. And, so let's just say 90,000 might come off of that number, so we're at 336, the negative now, we might be 250, negative when I do the transfers. Typically, those transfers don't happen until late in June though, just until the whole year's straightened out, so. But probably about 250. But if you look at last month, we were negative 308, and now we're negative 336. So, without transfers, I'm gonna make the assumption that next month, we're gonna be somewhere negative 350, just trending in that direction.
Right.
So, even if I take 90 off, it's still not gonna always, it's not gonna end the year at 250, if that's what I projected. It might end the year at 260.
Right.
270, you know.
And that's primarily the BIAs or the?
Yeah, ISPs, part of it, yeah. You know, part of it is, you know, we have a budget for hiring teachers, and if we come in over budget, we budget every new hire M4 in the budget process, and if we hire an M8, or an M9, or a master's plus 60 credits, that can have an effect on it also. Our principals usually do a very good job of leveling the field. If they really go after a high-tenure teacher, they also backfill another position with a, more of an entry-level position.
Yeah.
Or an entry-level teacher, I'm not saying position, a teacher. So. They do a good job around that.
Yeah.
So, the next page we usually don't cover for the new people, it's just worked out by location. And then, the page after that is kind of where our funds come from every year, whether it be chapter 70, or local funds, or grants, or revolving accounts. So, page four of the reports is our grant recap. We seem to be in pretty good shape for all of our grants. I did this week, carry forward some grant money into next fiscal year, some Title I, Title II, and some IDEA, special education grant money into next year. Small amounts, I think total maybe $70,000 between all three of them, carried into next year, just 'cause we usually typically don't spend all of our Title I money. We usually kind of rule it into the next year. All of our grants, all of our federal grants are two-year grants. We get a new allotment every year, but you have two years to spend it, so as a kind of safeguard, it helped us a couple of years ago when ours Title I grant went from 220,000 down to 120,000 without any notice. So, having that, that buffer helps us out. And then, finally, I go over the revolving accounts, that's usually where there's the most interest. School lunch is doing phenomenal right now. Cable TV is one that we, we have a good grasp on, it's just one of those things that we do need to be cognizant of, if there's changes in the cable TV industry as far as the FCC charges, that's where it funds us. So, if there are changes that are proposed, that could be a situation we need to address in the future. As of right now, there's, there's nothing solid on that. Athletics is healthy. Building rental is coming back into the positive this month, I anticipate. We did get a couple of payments in that we've been waiting for from some of our rental, rental organizations. So, hopefully, that will be by, will be positive by the end of the year, hopefully be positive by the, by the end of May for the reports for June 1. Everything else is really coming into line. Our circuit breaker, we did get a third of four payments. We have one payment remaining in circuit breaker, so that, that'll add another $433,000 to that, to that line before the end of the year. So, circuit breaker should end somewhere around a half a million dollars.
Carry forward.
Excuse me?
If you're getting 400 in, then you're negative two, you're gonna end up.
Negative two is last year's number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong column.
Yeah, so one column to the left, we're right now positive 46,000.
Yeah. My bad.
Yeah, that's good.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Like, for instance, you know, the school lunch account, were there any capital requests that didn't make the cut that could be funded off of that, like the equipment for them?
So, what we did ask in the capital purchase was.
Freezers made it, right?
The freezers for the high school, but we had asked for them to be totally redone, and they only put enough money in to replace the compressors and condenser units on three out of the four units. So, we are actually soliciting other quotes to see if there's more work that can be done with the money that's allotted.
It's been allotted.
Right. And, and whether we need to kick in, you know, 15,000 or 20,000 from the school lunch account to get them all.
Right, I mean, that's kind of what that account is for, so.
Refresh equipment, yeah.
Yeah.
This year, we had a tilt skillet at the Woodville that was having consistent issues, firing up, I think, for lack of a better term, but firing up. So, we worked with some capital money that we had left over, along with Kristen made an investment out of her accounts, Kristen and Lisa out of their revolving accounts to replace that unit. So, they are replacing units. We did some work with some dishwashers this year, and I believe there's a couple of stoves next year on the capital plan also that'll be replaced, so. Thank you. So, that's it for the, for the monthly reports. I do have the payroll warrants. I would ask that the school committee approve payroll warrant number 41 and 43.
I move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 41 and 43 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous?
There's one gift this evening, the gift, a very generous gift from the Megan S. Burnett Foundation. That gift is $1,000 for furniture and other supplies for the Wakefield Memorial High School, Megan S. Burnett Maker Space area as part of our learning commons at Tappi High School.
I move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,000 from the Megan S. Burnett Foundation for furniture and other supplies for the Wakefield Memorial High School, Megan S. Burnett Markerspace.
Maker.
Maker. Oh, yep, sorry, added an R by mistake.
Motion's in May, the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? A very big thank you. All those in favor? Great.
Along those lines, there is in your packet a nice write-up provided by the foundation about, about their foundation, so if you have a chance to read that, or if you haven't had a chance to read that, very great, nice piece. The last item for tonight, annually, I have to do a report to Department of Education on how we expended our funds. It's a very large Excel spreadsheet that has all types of links and tie-outs to different areas. Takes about two weeks to put a report together, it's usually done, it's done before October 31st, or before September 30th. So, I do that report, and then we have an auditor come in and audit that report, and I usually present the findings of the audit to the committee. In the report this year, there were three findings, and I'll cover them really briefly. The first finding was that I had reported revenues on the Mass School Building Authority for the Dolbear and Woodville, Woodville projects, so we are still paying on those projects. I'd reported the revenues that MSBA had given us, because on those projects, they pay over 20, they pass back over 20 years, unlike the Galvin, we got all of our money up as we expended it. But for the Woodville and Galvin, uh, Woodville and Dolbear, I reported the revenues that MSBA had sent us, but I failed to report the, the payments that we had made to, on the bonds, on the, on the loans. So, they caught that, I fixed it, created an amendment, sent it into the Department of Education, and everything's fine there. The second finding is a finding that's in our report every year. The, the state requires that we have an agreed-upon process with the town on how we reconcile that, when I do that report, the town sends me figures to put in on their expenses, how much they allocate for accounting and fieldwork, you know, the DPW's, time and efforts, and cutting the fields, and raking the leaves, and benefits, insurance benefits for the all employees. So, they send me just a number for each category, and I plug it into my report. The Department of Ed would very like us to have an agreed-upon, something that the town, town council and the school committee agree upon. It's probably something that Mr. Gill and I will be working on this year to, to get, but I can tell you, it hasn't happened in the last seven years I've been here, or for the years before that, so. I think it's more, it's a, it's a finding, it's not what we consider a severe finding, so. And then, the final finding was I had reported transportation expenditures in the wrong column, I reported them, I just did it as, I think, I did it as private school riders instead of public school riders for out-of-district transportation. I fixed that, created the amendment, and sent it back in. So, those are the three findings. Certainly, I strive to have zero findings, but I think that these, all three of these were, for the most part, minor, if I can say so.
I think that, you know, they would refuse to find nothing, they will find something.
I guess, yeah, some people say you have to find something in order to justify the audit, but yeah, you know. I have to say, I mean, the auditors are very good, very kind, they sometimes find stuff and let me fix it before they create a finding, so they're, they're, they're very generous, so.
Is there, sorry, is there a specific reason why we don't have anything, like, is it just because they don't want to do it, or?
No, I think Mike Connelly, my predecessor, was, had started to put something in place just before he left with Kevin Gill, and Kevin and I just never picked it up, I don't think that, be careful what I say here. I can't speak for Kevin.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I can't speak for Mr. Gill, but I don't find that it's critical. They, they tell us what they spend for benefits, they tell us what they spend, what percentage of money they allocate for field, for cutting the grass, and for plowing, and for HR benefits, and for, or for HR personnel as well, as well as for the benefit costs. They actually give us the actual costs that are used for the school department, so it's just a matter of putting it into writing and getting both the school committee and the town council to agree that that's how we want to do it moving forward. I think a lot of it has to do with net school spending. Sometimes towns will inflate or deflate a number to get to the net school spending they need to get to, and Wakefield just uses the actual costs and regardless of what the next, net school spending numbers come out to, so.
Seems like, probably just, you know, you can have some problems with more high priorities to worry about most of the time.
That's what I wanted to say, but, you know, I mean, this truly, if it's a finding, then it's a priority, I think we should, we should look at it a little further, and I do have some time scheduled with Mr. Gill next week, that maybe we can.
You can do it easily, that's fine.
Yeah, and we have some samples from other districts, other towns, on how they, how they line theirs out. Again, they wouldn't be identical, because we may calculate something different than another town, but at least we have some guidelines to work from, so.
Great.
That is all I have for reports this evening.
What's the superintendent? Oh, I'll move on to my stuff, I'm sorry. I skipped my own, that's really, I don't have that much. MSBA did come out to the Greenwood School last week, right? My understanding, they had a pretty productive meeting, and they will give us an answer as to whether we've been accepted for that route by the end of the school year?
Yep, end of June.
End of June, and if, if we are approved, it would be the following summer when they do the work. Okay. As far as subcommittees go, if you would get to me as soon as possible what you would like to be on, give me like, you know, three or four choices, like maybe in order of preference, we'll try to see what we can do with everybody. These assignments should change with the fiscal year, so I'd like to have things in place for July. And then, lastly, just a reminder that Wakefield Memorial High School graduation is coming up in a couple of weeks. If you have not responded with your RSVP, please do so. And if you've had any, I know Anne's already talked about her, her daughter's diploma, if you have anybody, a family member that you'd need to hand the diploma, you need to file that request with the, with the high school. And that's it for me. Oh, Mr. Lyons, I'm sorry.
Great, we're moving quickly. Just a, just a few comments, I would like to just let everybody know that we are finishing up MCAS in grades three through eight. I would like to commend the test coordinators. The tests are coordinated and arranged by the school administration, usually the assistant principals at the larger schools, but it's quite, it's quite a bit of work. The details, you know, the devil's in the details, the details matter, and they're working really hard, and kids, and the effort that our students are putting forth is, is just really amazing. We've had a few technology glitches that is not really on our side, but on, on the kind of the test nav or Pearson side, who creates the space, the testing space. We had a student at the middle school who put her answers in and, and, you know, tried to proceed in the head, and, and everything just went blank. And she very wisely, you know, wrote down her, her answers on a, on a scrap piece of paper, and was able to, to put them in and not lose any time or any credit, so she did a great job. But the kids are really working hard, and, and the adults are really kind of working to make this go. It, it takes quite a bit of effort to, to kind of put all that together. Just a few other comments, and then kind of areas of recognition, you know, Brendan Kent for kind of jumping in and partnering, working in collaboration with both Melrose and Lexington to create the unified sports offering for our students has really been amazing, and I know Lily said she was part of it, but it's really something, if, if you can get a chance to see it, it's really something to, to watch, and, and our students are so kind to give their time, and, and to really just create an offering for students that might not have an opportunity to do that, so again, Lily, thank you. Just a few other kind of points of information, on June 6th, that will be the dedication for the Megan Burnett Maker Space in the library, that's the evening that the dedication is gonna happen.
Did you say the 6th?
June 6th, correct. And, and I can't thank our Lisa Burke and Diana Hall enough for really working to make that happen with, with Mr. and Mrs. Burnett. That's just really something that we're particularly proud of, and, and I think that that's gonna be a benefit for all students and for the school, for our high school as well. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at there.
Did you give it time?
I believe it's 6:00 PM, and so, I'll double-check that and, and make sure I clarify that in.
Thank you.
In our next meeting, but I believe it's 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
So, just other comments, just information, we are moving forward with the Woodville Elementary Principal Search. We've created a timeline, so we posted for the principal's position a week ago, and the, the closing, the posting will be closing this coming Friday, the 17th. To date, we have just above 50 applicants for that position, and we are, I put out an email today, and we've met with staff over at Woodville to talk about the characteristics that they would like to see most in their new leader. We've also put out an email to garner any interest that the community may have in volunteering to participate in the interviews, and there's been actually just quite a bit of interest, and it's gonna be difficult, it's 'cause we don't have a lot of spots, but that's really a nice problem to have. So, that's what's happening there, and there'll be more information in our next school committee meeting on that. I don't know if people have questions on it? You look like you have a question, Suzy?
I've got a question, yeah. Yeah? For public folks that want to be involved in that process, knowing that there's limited spots, when do you need to hear from people?
So, I put out an email today, and I've gotten about 25 responses already for four spots.
Okay.
So, I think we're, we're gonna have more than enough opportunity, and there'll also be opportunities as we go through the process, when we invite finalists back, there'll be opportunities for the community, parents, and students to meet the finalists as well.
Kind of like you did for the?
Exactly like we did for our other positions.
Okay.
For the high school, and also for Walton a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
And Greenwood a year ago. So, it's not an unfamiliar process to us, but we're very excited about that. And we're also excited for Principal Zatoli, who's going to be moving to a smaller school, and she's excited about making that move, and so we wish her the absolute best. So, that's just a quick update on the Principal Search.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Public interest, you have the 25 people for four slots, is there a criteria that you use to pick those people, or is it kind of a pull the names out of a hat, or?
So, what we're gonna do is we're going to, you know, look at kind of when, kind of when they came in, and so, and try to just make connections to people who we know, you know, if you're a fourth grade parent and you're moving on, you know, we might try to, we, we want to create entry points for everybody.
Yeah.
So, but at the same time, we know that not everyone is going to be able to be part of the interviews. So, there might be a cohort that is part of the welcoming committee, so they'll have an opportunity to meet candidates. And if they're not part of round one, maybe they'll be part of the finalists. So, we try to create entry points for everybody, but right now, the criteria that we're using is kind of the first people that have responded. We'll try to move those forward in, in the process. So, that's where we're at there. We've also heard from a bunch of faculty members as well that want to be part of the process. And so, it's, it's, it's a really good problem to have, but it, that's where we're at there.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on, on the Principal Search timeline? No?
I'm sorry. One of the school committee members or chair will take place in that search as well, or no?
So, no. And so, we'll, we'll make a recommendation and when, you know, we move the finalist forward or the person who we are going to appoint, the school committee will meet that person.
Okay.
Yeah. But the school committee is more than welcome to participate in all of the public aspects of it. Yeah. And so, I also got a question a little bit earlier this week in regard to just an update around other leadership positions that are available in the, in the district. And so, Mr. Colin Tony and Andrew Tetralt are, are working at the middle school to hire for an assistant principal position. Jenely Coin, who currently lives in Quincy and has just started a new family, is finding the commute through Boston just really untenable. And so, she is, just has decided that she's going to step away from her AP position at the middle school, which is a loss for us because she's such a star. But Duxbury very wisely scooped her up, so she was offered a position there. And Adam, Colin Tony and Andrew Tetralt have, they're in round two. So, they have two finalists at this point and we should be hearing more information next week on that. So, I'll have more information to offer in our next school committee meeting. So, other information, just a, a very quick Learn Anywhere update. The Learn Anywhere Committee is going to be meeting tomorrow to review the survey data. And the survey data is going to be a little bit different this year because there hasn't been a lot of snow days this winter. And so, people have kind of limited experience this year with the process. And so, but we're excited to, to kind of have an opportunity to get feedback and think about how we can improve that process. If you remember, the Learn Anywhere process is not just for snow days. It's about us learning and creating opportunities for students to learn outside of school. So, we'll also be developing some summer work and around English Language Arts and math as well as science and other curricular areas as well that students can participate in over the summer. And so, Michael Piffling touched on the end of year audit, so it's been on the agenda in both places. So, it, the line in mine is, is not appropriate there. It's, it's in Michael's and he covered that. And at this point, I would like to invite our MEKO director, Joel Viagis, to the table just to give an update on our MEKO program. So, Joel?
Good evening. Thank you for the invite. So, in the past, this is my ninth year as MEKO director. And when I started this position, there were certain things that we felt we needed to tackle and, and change right away. And one of them was like the, the busing issue. We had the middle school and high, middle school and high schools together on one bus. And a lot of parents thought that that was kind of a problem, having fifth graders with seniors on the bus with no adult supervision. And they thought that it was inappropriate. So, what we did is we switched. We had the high schoolers be, have their own bus and we switched the middle schoolers to ride with the elementary, which is working out great. And then the other thing, we had thirteen stops at the time. So, our kids, our first bus pickup was like at five forty-five in the morning. And the last drop was around five forty-five to six o'clock in the, in the evening. And so, the same families were affected every single year. Those who were picked up at the beginning of the bus stops, they were the first ones to get on the bus, five forty-five, and the last ones to get off. And after attending a lot of MEKO Directors Association meeting, I found out that many districts didn't have that many stops. And so, got together with the parents and we reduced the number of stops. We also, when I first started, we only had students at the Greenwood. For whatever reason, we just had MEKO students at the Greenwood Elementary School and not the other elementary schools. And as superintendents came in, they wanted the other elementary schools to also have the same exposure to the Boston kids in their schools. So, we slowly began to add students to, we started at the Woodville because I was next to the high school and my office is there, so it was easier for me to like go over to the high school, to the, to the Woodville and work with those kids. And then we added the Dolbear and Walton. And that was all also possible due to increased budget at the time. We did have an increase in budget about five, six years ago. And we were also able to add a paraprofessional in those schools. One of the things that we had to do in one of the schools, the last school, the Walton, we invited Michelle Chalmers, who is the author of The Story of MEKO and also The Skin on My Chin, to talk, we had two assemblies, one is, one for the first and second graders and the other one for the third and fourth graders. And basically engage in conversation about skin color, ancestry, diversity, race, stereotypes and prejudice. And actually, that is a second book that she wrote and that we're hoping to invite her back to the other elementary schools so that all students have this exposure. This, not this year, last year or about a year and a half ago, Mr. Colin Tony, our middle school principal, he followed one of our students from the time that the student got on the bus in the morning until the ti, until the time he went home. He never, he didn't realize that our students, our middle school students were being picked up right at dismissal and going to the other four elementary schools to pick up the other students. We met with the parents and out of this, we basically had, we sort of switched it. So, the students now, our middle school students stay at the, at the Galvin until three thirty. So, the bus doesn't pick them up at dismissal. That way, students can stay and they can participate in the Wakefield Academy. They can stay and work with their peers, get to know the community, be included in the community, which is one of the things that the parents wanted to do, wanted their, their children to, um, experience. And so, they're picked up after the last elementary school students are picked up. So, they're in the district for at least an hour and fifteen minutes after school for different opportunities. And that was something that went very well with the parents. We also, for the high schoolers, now we also have a late bus every single day. The parents are so ecstatic about that because for years, our students were not able to fully participate in after-school activities or sports. And so, this past January, we worked with Michael Piffling and we leased with the Wakefield Academy and the athletic department a van. And so, now we have access to that van every single day. And I'm just amazed at how many kids end up staying after school because now they can stay after school and either participate in extracurricular activities, do sports, or see the teachers after school. They don't have to wait until Tuesday and Thursday because we used to have the late bus that ran only on Tuesday and Thursday because of the budget. So, that is a big win for us. About five, six years ago, we started International Night. And that came about when we celebrated the forty-fifth, yeah, the forty-fifth anniversary. And at the time, we had the MAC, MEKO Advocacy Council that used to meet and that was, that was created or organized by us, but we had an administrator, we had teachers, we had students. We had parents from both Boston and Wakefield participate and just advocate for the program and make the program more visible. And that's how the International Night began with that committee, which has been a huge success for us, for, for the district. Part of that year, we also organized a Boston bus tour. We had, it was on a weekend, on a Saturday morning, and we invited the community, both communities, to take this bus tour around Boston neighborhoods. So, basically what the bus did, came to Wakefield, picked up Wakefield residents, Wakefield staff, and headed down to Boston and did the, the whole bus stop that the students do in the morning, which was very eye-opening for a lot of, a lot of the staff and adults that were there. And then we ended with a picnic at the Franklin Park Zoo. Both communities came together and had a picnic. One of the things, and again, this has happened in the past nine years. This year, we rolled out the Family and Friends Program, tried to do it in more organized and structured. And one of the things that we found out is that a lot of people don't know what it entails to be part of the Family and Friends Program. So, even though we sent out information and we had families that wanted to participate, they weren't sure specifically what that entailed. So, one of the things that we need to do next year or over the summer is let them know what the commitments are. Because some people thought, oh, I, I really want to participate, but I don't know if I can have my kids stay over. Or I don't know if I can be there every single day. And that's not what the, the program is about. It's, it's basically for our students to have a place to go if they're participating in the choir. Like we have the elementary schools that have, every grade, they have their own concert that the, our student can have a place to go for an hour or two until the parents can come up. So, the little things like that, that we found out. We also last year started HMP, the Hermanos Mentoring Program, where high schoolers go to the elementary school and spend time with kids at their school. Usually, they do it during lunchtime. It's been sort of hodgepodge-ish because we really haven't come up with a schedule, just because we don't have transportation. A lot of times, I end up taking the students to the elementary school, but it's been a great hit. The element, my elementary kids, every week asking me, when is so-and-so coming? Oh, she is so nice. Oh, she helping with this. Oh, we read together. And that, that's so nice to hear because our high schoolers also enjoy it. They're, not only the elementary schools are asking, the elementary students are asking, but also the high schoolers are asking, when are we going to do this again? So, we're trying to come up with sort of a frequent schedule, whether that's once a month or every three weeks, so that they can come together and the high schoolers can mentor the elementary kids. One of, and then last, one of the things that we started last year, thanks to Mr. Lyons, we started to talk more about cultural proficiency in the district. And so, we began with a group of staff members. Last year, we had seven people who signed up, excuse me, and this year, we had nineteen, nineteen staff members. And basically, what we've done as a group is, the first year, the first year, we had staff do some cultural self-assessment. And we talked about valuing diversity. And one of the things that we wanted to do was listen to students' voices. And so, we invited our, one, the, three, four years ago, we invited our seniors and we had senior panel discussion just so that they can talk about their experiences as a student in the MEKO program attending Wakefield Public School. And we also invited, then adults wanted to hear from everyone, not just the seniors, but just everybody. So, we had the entire high school students and invited them to hear from them as well. And out of this, out of conversations that we had with them, came courageous conversations. So, we began to have courageous conversations this year where we invited our student leadership to speak with our students and hear how they are feeling as a student of color here in Wakefield. And we not only include, we, it wasn't only for the Boston kids, but also for the students of color in Wakefield. And it was very powerful. It was very eye-opening. And it, it's hard to, sometimes it's hard, difficult to have these conversations. But we had, it, the outcome of it was very positive where students ended up talking to each other about how they're feeling in the school. And so, because of that, we are going to continue the conversations next year. We are going to continue this cultural proficiency professional development series. Today, I was able to lock Ms. Kathy Lopez, who's the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion of MEKO Inc., to come and be our facilitator or our leader for next year's PD series. So, I was really happy that she had these dates open because as soon as the calendar was sent to us, we looked at the dates, Karamara and I, and we sent it out to her. So, we're happy that we're going to continue these conversations with students and staff as well. That's it.
Thank you, Joel. Any questions from the committee?
What time does that late bus leave?
So, the late bus, and that's, this is the beauty of it, it leaves whenever. Meaning that one of our paraprofessionals is in charge of that. And so, all the students who are staying after school, they have her text. And what she does is she'll, every single day, she'll ask the students, you know, what time are you done with practice? What time are you done with the game? And usually, there's one kid who does the baseball. Everyone ends early except this one kid who does baseball. And they're like, come on, come on, can't you leave early? So, basically, it's whenever they're all done, they'll text her and they'll get picked up actually right out here. So, it's anywhere between five and seven forty-five.
Amy?
I just had two questions. The first one is how many students throughout the district are involved in the MEKO program?
So, we have seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Okay, thank you.
And we had forty-one back when I started and we're seventy-two.
And they're all dispersed, obviously, between all the schools?
Mm-hmm. Our, our largest groups are at the high school and middle school.
Okay, great. And then my other question was for teachers. Are there programs for teachers to be involved with to like go to seminars or other things? You know, if they are teaching MEKO students? I just wasn't sure if there was anything available.
So, there are various opportunities out there. As far as what MEKO has, we do have our annual MEKO Conference, which is the first Friday in December, which is, it's a huge event and we have four hundred plus people attend from all over the state.
Okay, thank you.
Connelly?
So, I just had a, a question. I know that the conversations are ongoing. I imagine that they, they're progressive and, you know, maybe those conversations will spur some sort of district-wide conversation, right, with all of our students? But one other question I had was that- But one of the questions I had was that um, did the kids talk, or the students talk about, um you mentioned, of course, the their ability to participate in extracurriculars and just having that connection with the students after school. Does that sort of make their experience overall a little bit more positive, so that the students can see them in a different light, rather than they just come to school and they have to get back on a bus and go back to Boston? You know, now they're assimilating, you know, in in all of the different facets of the community, really, well, as much as they can. So I just wondered if that, if you've seen sort of a positive correlation with their their experience and their and the and the conversations, you know, kind of spurring that kind of talk?
So one of the things, one of the conversations I've had with the students is that I've observed that students who put themselves out there, participate in activities, um they, they feel more included, or they have a better um experience. Um so we try to encourage them to participate, whether even if it's after school, the Spanish Club, or anything like that, just so that they can and and a lot of times, I'll tell them, you know, do you have a friend in math class or this class? Find out if you guys have the same interests and go to that club or go to that activity after school. Um and those are the kids that have a more positive experience. Um some of the kids that either isolate themselves, whether it's, you know, for various reasons. Um sometimes, they tend not to have the 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 best experience.
Do they also, um are they able to, especially our middle school students, do you find that they're going over to the Boys and Girls Club as well?
Yes. So we we have a few that do that. Um we we actually had a about a handful of boys that used to go over there all the time. Um and now, it's basically just two kids that that go there all the time. But a lot of times, they'll try to grab their friend and come with us and they'll go over there. And we have actually more more kids, because they're here later, more kids that will go to their friend's house. Which is good to see.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anne?
Thank you for your report, Joel. You've done a lot. It's awesome. Um is part of your job description to provide professional development training to the staff and faculty here at the public schools? Or is that something you've sort of taken on because there's a, you you saw a need for it?
Well.
So I I can answer that. The answer is no. It's not part of his job, but I think it's something that he's taken on as something that is kind of part of who he is. It's part of his DNA. Like, you know, this this issue of equity and kind of perspective-taking and cultural proficiency is something that I think um he is passionate about. And I and I think that, you know, we've connected on this, and I think that we've been able to grow conversations with adults um that have become larger and larger in the last few years um to now where students are taking some of this work on um and being able to talk about equity and race and and what it means to be a student of color, not only in Wakefield, but a student of color in the United States in two thousand nineteen. You know, and 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 that's something that is is very challenging. Um and our students are able to talk very candidly about this to one another, and and they're becoming more comfortable um in talking with adults about some of their feelings. And I think the reason that they are becoming more comfortable is specifically because of Joel's work. So I'm sorry to cut you off there, but I know you're struggling to come out and say yes. It's not really a yes.
Well, that's what I suspected. And um and and I think the work you're doing is grassroots. It's critical. Um but I think we need to institutionalize that conversation much better and much more in our district. Um and, you know, I I think of of the conversations that are had in 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 any school where there's a a minority group. And despite one's best intention, you know, if if you're not educated, if you don't view history in the same way, or you don't see yourself in history, right, in the history that's being taught, then um your experience w- will be vastly different from the majority culture. And I think it's it's critical that we take that privilege that we have as as the majority culture here and that we um that we look inward and we see what we need to, how we be, need to behave differently in a lot of ways. Um you know, the a a term that I've I've learned about, say, within the past year or two, is the term of microaggression. And, you know, that might be a term that is used, uh you know, within the schools, and the kids might understand. I see Lily is like, yeah.
The diversity leaders do facilitate an activity teaching the students about microaggression?
Right. So, you know, that might be a conversation that that we have with our uh the adults as well. Because you might say well-intentioned things or behave in a way and you, but it's, it doesn't get received in the same way, right? And so um and I I think I brought this up before. Um the the great work that Facing History, Facing Ourselves does in schools. Um I mean, I know we're in charge of the budget and all of that, and I have no idea what the costs are. But I suspect that the benefits will be, would be uh well worth the investment. So I I guess Doug and and your team, I'm sort of uh challenging you and 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 us as a district to really look fully and and not necessarily rely on the the good-heartedness of this one, you know, pretty remarkable guy that we own it as well.
Yeah, I I think I think you're spot on. I, one of the things that we've done, and, you know, Joel is kind of soft-selling some of this, because you know, one of the things that we've done is is brought, you know, cultural proficiency work into our five-part series. So it's formalized now. It's given time. It's given space. There's a budget. There's a facilitator. We've kind of grown that into now bringing students into helping um uh helping our teachers, our faculty and staff understand from a student's perspective what it's like to be educated in in this environment, right? Um Lily mentioned our diversity leaders a a moment ago. You know, uh I met with our diversity leaders uh just before February vacation, and we had talked about having our diversity leaders become part of our teacher induction program. So that's when teachers, our new teachers are hired in the summer, they will meet with students to hear what it is like to be a student, to be, you know, our our best teachers in a lot of instances are our students, right? And so especially when it comes to uh cultural awareness, uh their perspective and how we need to consider that. You know, Jason Pavy alluded to this a moment ago, or a moment, in a moment, of what he was reporting um last week when he was going over his curriculum review. You know, one of the things that that Cara and and Jason are doing, and Cara is now implementing, Cara Morrow, our Assistant Superintendent, is kind of with all of the curriculum materials that are brought in, um is really developing a a cycle to look at bias within the curriculum. How are different populations represented in our history texts? So that's a, that's a part of, and this, they didn't mention this in their presentation, but these things are more prevalent now um and more up, more becoming part of um our systems, right? And so I I agree with you completely, um that it needs to be part of our practice. And I think when the more opportunities that teachers have um to to learn about kind of bias um and about di- different perspectives, I think the more effective we will be in making space for students and and being effective in teaching them. And so I hear you loud and clear. Um in terms of the challenge, I think we welcome it. Right? And so I think we'll, there's more to report on that in the coming meetings.
Um sure. Although I feel like my comment that I'm about to make, coming off of that feels very lighthearted, but um I just wanted to say thank you for giving an update and to tell you that my family's favorite night is International Night. And we made the mistake of going last year, having eaten dinner, and then got there and was like, what the heck is this? And then came back this year again to really, really enjoy it. My son came over and he goes, I think I just ate goat, and it was delicious. And he's thirteen, right? It was, it's a great night, so well done. Totally appreciate this um update and the wonderful work that you're doing. And I would just add kind of to Anne's statement and to what Doug was just saying. If there's anything that you feel like you need the school district to budget and support to be feeling like you can come back to this group to ask for that support, I certainly would love to hear what else you feel like you need to be doing and how how we can support you. So thanks for the update.
Joel, I had um heard, and I I I just don't know if you are positioned to speak to it or not, um that there's something like administrative changes within MECO a- about how students are selected for the program? Is that changing from the way it was done before?
Yes, so that is um I believe changing next year. Um so we, it used to be uh done on a first-come, first-served basis, and then there was a waiting list. Um so as as MECO Inc. uh chose folders um from the waiting list, the the, you know, people uh at the bottom come up, and I think they're um, they're going to do a lottery system. So it's gonna be um all digital and um they're using, I believe, school mint. So.
So if you if you were not selected this year, you you're not first in line, you're just back at the bottom of the, like, back in the the general population of like, you could be first or last again?
That's what it sounds like.
And and do they give preference to families that with a child already in the program?
Yes, so they're keeping that piece. Yep, they're they're giving preference to siblings, to families who are already part of the district. Um they're selecting those and just sending them to the district, but the rest of the um if any more folder files are needed, then it's gonna be done by a lottery system.
What what would you say that, maybe you don't know, but the uh, like, if if there are three thousand students in the program, how many are on the waiting list? An equal number, or is it a smaller list, or?
It's almost triple.
Yeah, in in the past, it's been more, ten, twelve thousand on the waiting list.
Wow.
That was, that was actually on the news, that the parents in Boston are not happy about the new process at all. They're really, really upset about it, especially those that were on a waiting list.
But that that is already decided and that they say how it works at this point?
It sounds like it.
Well, the new director um is pretty innovative and and
Is that, is that the woman, we met in Boston?
We did. We met her in the fall, Millie. Um she's very innovative, and and the the MECO leadership has worked with MIT, and they think that the system will get students placed more quickly. Um and it's gonna be um kind of brought in over the course of of, I think, two years. So there's kind of different milestones, so that people aren't adversely affected. But I think the general impression was that if you were close to the top of the list, that you were gonna be displaced. I don't believe that that's going to happen based on the design of the new lottery system. Um I I, and that's why I think that they're going to phase it in over time. Um and I think what's gonna happen, based on the information I think that Millie's been provided from MIT, is that more kids are going to be placed more effectively and more quickly. So uh that's the design, as as I understand it, but there'll be more to report as I think time goes on.
I appreciate you coming in. That's a great report. Now we'll have to
Thank you.
We'll have to have you a couple times a year. Keep us up to date. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And that's it for me.
It concludes, okay. Uh subcommittee reports, uh assuming finance is not met, Anne?
No, I'm like only standing by.
I'm go, I I'm go, I will join you. 'Cause we will need to uh have a discussion about uh end-of-year transfers and whatnot sometime soon.
Okay.
Um I'm sure Michael's not quite ready for that, but uh sometime, I'm guessing by the beginning of June, we should talk? So uh we'll we'll get together with the date, okay?
Yep.
Okay, uh labor. Uh Tom is not here, but do you have anything to say, Colleen?
Um we continue to meet. Um we have a robust, I feel like I should use Tom's words. We have a a very robust schedule. We we just uh put a lot of, a lot of meetings on.
Already, right?
Twi- uh yes, yes. Some of them, yeah, yes. So, yeah, but we uh meet as a subcommittee and also with the units, so we hope to be reporting um, you know, soon to the full committee.
You have, could I get something to add to that, Colleen?
Um no, I think Colleen covered, yeah.
All right. Uh policy, um Amy and I met with with Doug, and we continued to look at the uh the policies that had been up for uh on the discussion. Uh the attorneys uh have updated some of the language they felt that that we should have in there uh to reflect the current law. And uh, you know, plus, we we just revised things to as as uh to make things kind of fit with the community was told us we thought we were hearing anyway. I don't think you have something to add?
Um no, we just made some updates that.
So uh during that meeting, it 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 was pointed out to me that the even since Colleen and Amy have joined the committee, we have not actually presented the policies. So I'll explain the way it's usually done. Is that a a new policy is brought forth, and the term we use, we place it on the table. It it's, you have two weeks to think about it, make phone calls to the superintendent or to myself for clarification. And then at our next meeting, uh we can discuss it, uh either accept it as it is, suggest changes, whatever happens, and then we'll vote on it at the next meeting. But tonight's motion is simply to put it out there for discussion. And it also gives the community a chance to weigh in on on anything that we're gonna be talking about. So with that, a motion, please.
Yeah, I'm, Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So the way that the red is
Is the new stuff.
The new stuff.
Right.
And that's been uh reviewed by
The attorney.
The attorney.
Most of it, most of the red's from the attorney.
From the attorney. Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
There, some part of it isn't. I mean, some part of it is, um has been provided, and and just in regard to good practice from some of our other surrounding districts. Um and I, it also represents some of the things that we had been doing, but I think it's important to memorialize that in the policy itself. But is that fair?
I move that the school committee lay on the table, policy number nine oh six, Religious Holidays, for a period of two weeks, for consideration at the May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen school committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Be unanimous.
Um I move that the school committee lay on the table, policy number one zero zero eight dash R, Student Athletic Concussion, for a period of two weeks, for consideration at the May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen school committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? It would be unanimous. And uh student services?
We haven't met with my new gig on uh labor relations. Haven't had an opportunity.
Okay. And uh future dates and agenda items? Anything anybody would wish to bring forth on an upcoming meeting? Okay. Uh school committee comments, uh start with Tom?
I have none, thank you.
Colleen?
No comments.
Anne?
None, thank you.
Suzie?
Oh, I'm gonna make a comment of two. Um so I had the pleasure of going to the United Sports Event. Um, so I had the pleasure of going to the United Sports Event, um, with my two kids, uh, in Wakefield. We only got to stay for three of the quarters, but it was so well-done. And Brendan was the emcee, he was calling the game. It was just a, a sight, really. And it was, um, a shame that there weren't more people there to support it. Um, so I'm hoping that maybe when it comes back to Wakefield, um, we'll see some more kids show up to support, um, all, all of the students. But it was, it was really fun. And, um, we're, you know, we were cheering on the Lexington kids and, and the Wakefield kids and, um, and my son happened to be looking through the newspaper from the last couple days and there's a whole, like, centerfold, right? Of what was in the, of, I guess, maybe the Lexington game. Um, but, um, it was, if you have an opportunity to go to one of those events, I highly recommend it. It was, it was great. It really, really well-done.
What time did they start the game? I'm sorry to interrupt.
It was, was it like a six? Oh, that's right, it was after school. Yeah, it started at like four. So I picked my kids up early from Boys and Girls Club and took them over. Um, it was really fun. Um, I also went to a social media presentation that was at the Galvin last week, um, where a speaker came in and spoke to the middle school kids during the day and then spoke to, um, parents at night. I don't know who, um, sponsored that, um, but it was a really well-done, um, presentation, just giving parents of middle school students some advice about kind of, um, what you should be looking for, how much time kids are spending online, how you might wanna manage your kid a little differently, which was why I was there, um, and it was just really, um, well-done. Um, not many people came, which I thought was kind of a shame and I'm not sure why that was, um, 'cause I think it was pretty well-advertised. Um, but it was another gr- great event. And then the last thing, I got a, I believe, only because I'm a school committee member, got an invitation to the AP art show, which was phenomenal. Um, took my kids to that also and to showcase our art students and the work that they do, that, what a great event.
So talented.
Really. A tremendous amount of talent. Um, and I was, um, I didn't know that they even had AP art. I don't think they had that when I was in high school and so I was a little surprised that that even existed, first of all. Um, and then to see kind of the portfolio of breadth and then their portfolio of their concentration, um, we're doing really great stuff in Wakefield. So it was, it's been a fun two weeks of, um, participating in some, um, some good stuff.
Great. Colleen?
Not Colleen, Amy?
God, jeez.
No comment.
No comment. Looking at you and getting the wrong name. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay, so our next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, uh, here at WCAT. And with that, uh, motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.